You're on, Mr. Bradley.
Yep.
So, thank you for coming to Coffee Talk 2.0. Very nice to see lots of new people here. Awesome to see, I won't call you old, but previous people here. There's coffee not quite ready, but when it is, you're more than welcome. There's cider and homemade cookies, which you must eat or I will. So...
Oh, am I supposed to sit there?
Well, I'm feeling a little alone. You know, like you...
All right.
Thank you, all right, I feel better. So, the rules are, there are no rules, except that the selectmen tonight will not be voting on anything, and we won't be deliberating on anything. The goal of tonight, just like it was in November, is to hear from you. What's on your mind? What's up? What we can do is update you on a few items from our last meeting back in November, and then we'll open the floor to you. I have a couple announcements from our most awesome town clerk, Eloise. Please get your census in, unlike mine that the cat threw up on and I have no idea where it is. Make sure that you send yours in. And dog licenses are still available. Yeah, good. You're more than welcome. So, before we start, Chris, I know that we had a meeting a couple weeks ago to talk about the Capes of Berlin, and I know a lot of people weren't there. Not sure how many folks know about it, so if you could give a brief update?
Just that, that evening when we were going to meet to get feedback from people, that we had a meeting, Paul McKelk and myself and Mark Rhodes, and Mark decided that it would not be in his best interest to continue with negotiations for this particular project. However, he's agreed that he's got an open mind, and we are going to continue to look for options. And one of the things I wanted to ask you all tonight was, I guess, how badly do you all want to acquire the land at South Common?
The land?
Yes.
There we go.
Yep.
You know, and, you know, I just, you know, appreciate any kind of feedback and support, and I continue to be in touch with Mark, and that's it. And please, my email is on the website. Yes?
Just a question. This is a question about the land that's next to the school that the town meeting voted to not buy?
Yes.
Yes.
Which I thought was crazy. It's like, why don't you buy it?
Right.
It's right there next to the school, but...
Yeah, it was a big faux pas, thank you.
It's a big deal.
So, we're looking into what we can do to acquire it.
Is there a new price?
Oh, I'm, I've asked Mark to put a price on it, and he hasn't done so yet. We are just trying to continue to look at different lands that we could swap to acquire it right now.
Swap?
Yes. We had been working on a land swap with some land over off of River Road that did not seem to be, the infrastructure there is such that it would be difficult to develop and costly, and I think that's what, why the negotiations ended at this point. So, yes?
Could we show hands of people in this room that are in favor?
That would like to acquire...
In favor of acquiring the South Commons land that is owned by Mike Rhodes.
Well, how much?
Well, how much?
No, no, just, no, just, do we want it?
Of course.
I don't, I don't think there's any question that people want it. I think it's the price that people are willing to pay, so...
Was there anyone that objects to acquiring that land in the room? So, I'm, I'm, I would like to understand how we missed. Is that, is that a factor in as we go forward? Is that going to happen to us again? Are we all going to go, yeah, this is a really good idea? And where Mark's going to come forth with some other thing, and I was going, nah, we don't like that one either? And, I mean...
I think that's a great question. How do we avoid this in the future?
I think we need to make sure that we get all the information out there, and, you know, have it be clear what, what the option is, the details.
Chris?
Yep.
Yeah. I think the tragedy at that town meeting was, and I have to confess, I didn't vote for it because I was under the impression at that time that we had satisfied our Chapter 40B, which meant that Rhodes could no longer override our local zoning to do it every month in town.
I don't know.
Well, that was the misimpression that a lot of us had.
Okay.
And I certainly would have voted for it otherwise, but that's why he ended up with it. Now, the deal that was going to be cut, as I understand it, the swap land down to, what's the saying, the gravelous pit would have ended up with a net gain of 88 houses in this town.
Minimums.
Minimum.
Well, that his house would have only been...
So, in that case, we're not willing to swap, number one. But, you know, I'd go for 600,000, 700,000, something like that. So, we should have had it. It's a shame, I, I don't know.
Well, if you have ideas, I appreciate you getting in contact with me and letting me know.
And poor Mark, by the way, he just picked up another place on Peach Hill Road that the Conservation Commission was working on, and would have connected a bunch of our land to Bolton, had this great vast natural area. He, you know, who mapped and showed the amount of development that he has done in Berlin and cashed in on it, this big fat cash cow that we live in, and just poor Mike Rhodes.
Well, that's actually a piece of land that he purchased in order to stay busy, so that we could continue to work on some kind of negotiation with him in order to acquire the land. So...
Excuse me?
Yep.
Can he still throw 40B down there even though we've started the apartments?
Yes.
He can?
Yes, he can. Because he applied for the, applied for the permit before we were at 10%.
All right.
So, moving on.
Moving on, appreciate the update. So, I want to turn it over to Lisa to give everybody an update on Town Administrator.
The screening committee has been filled. We will be interviewing screening firms this coming week. Hopefully, we can get them hired a few weeks after that. The goal is to have a, hopefully, a town administrator onboard by July 1st when the new budget goes into place.
Questions? Nothing from the corner?
I, the Rotten Peanut Gallery would like to know. Has anyone thought that we could have two more selectmen instead of a town administrator?
The Town Management Study Committee went through over a year and a half to get to the, the point that we are now, and their feeling was strongly that we need a town administrator. We are one of very few communities left, like, under 10, that do not have professional management.
In the common?
Yeah.
So, that, so that answers my concern. In, in, it's 20, 20 years ago, there were numerous cases where town administrations' positions were filled by nefarious characters who made off with the cash. But, when we think in a climate where there's much more common, it's a much more professional position than it was 20 years ago.
Yeah, we are the exception rather than the rule now, and we have a lot going on, and we desperately need professional help.
Okay.
And then, before I open it, there was one item that came up our last meeting about the mad dash across the center of town and how trying not to get picked off going from one side to the other. So, well, we've been in touch with Chief Galvin, who's working on a grant but needs to potentially loop it in with the school, so that the blinking lights, the pedestrian lights can go up on either side. But again, it's a state road, nothing will move quickly. We're also, look, I'm also working with the Capitol Planning to see if there's something that can be done, so we're very much on it and working with it. Don't have a lot of progress on it, but I keep, very good at nagging, so I keep nagging about where are we with this, so that we can get those blinking pedestrian lights as you try to cross by the general store.
So, surprise, surprise, I have a opinion about this topic as well.
Oh, my God! What's up?
So, is there anything that we can do to prevail upon Lancaster and Bolton to put some lights on 117, so that the, the commuters from the northwest don't come through Berlin to escape 117?
Be a hard stretch, I mean...
I mean, I'm just saying, is there, you know, is there any way that we can appeal to the state, maybe, maybe to Naughton, who's the head of transportation, to, can we, can we put some federal money together to help all these towns? Because, you know, you know people are coming Route 70 to avoid 117, and then they're, then they end up on 62? How else are they going to get to Boston?
It is pretty difficult to try and come out of Pleasant Street or South Street.
Oh, and it's, and it's...
To walk on and go this way.
You know those extra people are in that stream because they can't get on 117, yeah.
All right. Let me jump in on that.
No lights, no lights, no lights.
Just, just a different question. I've sat there, the general stores, obviously, it's hard to get out there, but often as a walker, a little bit down with the crosswalk right between the cemetery, that's very dangerous, because what happens there is that people can't see. And I can't tell you how many times over the years where there's almost been an accident. So, I'm very vigilant when I'll stand there, it was years with the storm. It's whether the light, the blinding, that's a very hard place to cross. People just don't see it. One will stop one way, they don't stop another. That's actually dangerous versus in the center of town. It's just kind of annoying that you have to wait a long time. The other is actually very dangerous, so I don't know if that's been considered or not.
First time it's come up, but appreciate it. We'll look into that one too with Representative Naughton. So, our items are done. The floor is now yours. Yes? Oh, yeah.
My question is related to the same issue, because I'm telling you, I've always wondered why there isn't one of those wide-angle mirrors up at that intersection. Is you're on Route 62 and you're headed westbound, you're going to make that sharp right turn. If you're trying to take the left to go down into Linden Street, you have to judge until the last microsecond if someone's going to come whipping around from the other direction before you dash out there to get on the Linden Street. And I think, I, I don't know exactly how you would have to position it, if it's possible, but it seems like if you could put one of those big wide-angle mirrors up there that you see like at the end of driveways and stuff sometimes, right at that corner, it could really improve the ability of the people making that turn on the Linden Street to see whether anybody's coming from the, in the eastbound lane of Route 62.
I think Oak Street has one of those mirrors that you're talking about.
They do, they do have to come down, so that, might be some kind of a study to look at the center of town in general for traffic.
I think people just have to abide by the law that says when somebody's in a crosswalk, they need to stop. I'm sorry, I'm agreeing with all of you, but do you know how many times I've had somebody stop and I've crossed and the person like zips by in the other direction when you're literally in the crosswalk? People just are not...
Yeah.
...law-abiding when it comes to crosswalks, unfortunately. It's terrible.
There's not law-abiding about double lines, there's not law-abiding about...
Well, I understand, but I mean, maybe if we had somebody out there stopping and pulling them over, they might stop. Whatever.
Make another comment?
Someone, I'm vision challenged, so I listen and cross, and I haven't had any problems because I get a big thank you, thank you, thank you. But someone suggested to me to say that they had seen in Rhode Island where on opposite sides of the crosswalk, there was a bucket with red flags, and the person who's crossing the street takes a red flag, still looking for vision, and holds the red flag as they cross, leaves it in the bucket on the opposite side, then goes about their business. I hadn't heard of it before, but it was in Rhode Island, and someone mentioned it, but if this is a state road, maybe that is possible.
It is a state, and that's, and that's what kind of impedes us, is it because it's a state road, so it's just not us going out and getting the money to put blinky lights up? It's, we need to work with the state and the legislation and try to get that all through. So, that's why we said, unfortunately, it's a very slow process. As quickly as you guys want us to move, it truly is up, up, wait, up, yeah. So, but we're working on it. Do you have a question? Nope?
No, just...
I have two traffic questions.
Okay.
I've asked the previous lockman and the police chief, this would have, could become a one-way drive. And I never see those things going across the road in the spring to measure the amount of traffic.
Okay. All right, and what else?
The other question is, going from the center up Pleasant Street, and if you want to go across South Street where there is a stop sign, you don't know whether to put your signal on or not. And it's a little hazardous going straight, so I didn't know if I wanted to put another stop sign, you know?
Mm-hmm.
At Pleasant Street in the corner, so...
Can I follow up on this for comment about that?
Sure.
Years ago, at town meeting, there was discussion about the whole Reese development, and whoever was representing the builder, and I can't even think of the builder's name at this point, specifically said that they were going to fix that intersection. They never did anything.
Who's that?
The present?
I'm sorry?
Is that the present people who own it, or was it the previous?
I, I can't recall which was originally voted at the meeting, and it was, so the, you know, the traffic was terrible, and really, when you're coming down Pleasant Street, you have no idea. And, you know, legally, the way the streets go, pleasant to pleasant and south and all of that, and you say, well, okay, if I'm staying on Pleasant Street, I shouldn't have to put a marker on, but the streets are not lined that way. So, the line says that you're going to go from Pleasant to South Street, and so it's a terrible intersection. I do it twice a day.
I don't think they were going to fix that until the project was complete, and it's not complete.
We never should have allowed that. Yeah, yeah, because it'll, it'll never be complete.
That was a terrible accident there. That was a terrible accident. And when the police came to the scene, they, they verbalized that it's an absolutely awful interception, so...
And like I said, the streets are not lined.
Right.
Le, you know, so you really have no idea.
One other item, two other items that I wanted to bring up before we opened the floor to you. One was the town report. We heard you loud and clear at the last meeting, and Scott Hawkins' advice to the selectmen rings clearly in my ear, but I will not repeat because while we're on camera. And so, the selectmen voted on Monday that there is a cutoff date for the information to come in for the town report, and that is February 11th at noon. Now, we understand the selectmen have discretion, someone's gathering information, we're not going to cut them off at the knees and say, so sad, too bad. But, at the same time too, this is not everyone's first rodeo to get the information in, so we heard you, we want to be able to get this information out. Hi.
Were you talking about, you said the town report? Are you talking about the warrant?
The warrant.
Okay.
The warrant that's in the town report.
Okay.
Yes. So, we did hear you on that, and the selectmen will do their absolute very best with me putting a hand firmly in the back of Chris and Lisa to make sure that we move this along, that we get the information in on time, as it should be. And one other one, oh, question?
I'm just applauding. Good job.
And another one that had come up, being totally transparent, when the news of Chief Paul's resignation leaked out to the town, that I was inundated with many calls and requests to potentially revisit strong chief versus weak chief. So, I know that it was voted in at the town, I'm not saying to change it, I'm not saying not to change it, but that is something that I wanted to bring up to everyone, to see if there was input either way, if people truly knew the difference between a strong chief and a weak chief, just so that we could get a little bit more feedback. So, as we're searching for an interim chief to fill the gap between March and July, and then July going forward with a full-time chief, this is something that we want to revisit with that.
Define weak and strong.
There's really, and we have many members from the fire department here, and I'm very happy that you're here, but the research that I've done said that there's really two differences between strong chief and weak chief. A strong chief, in order to fire a strong chief, you need to have cause, and you have to have a hearing.
Just cause?
Yes, just cause.
Just cause.
So that both sides can go back and forth, and I can say, you did, no, I didn't, yes, you did, here's the proof, no, it wasn't, and a decision is made. Where a weak chief is an employee at will, just like many of the employees in the state of Massachusetts, so firing can be done. One of the other items, difference between a strong chief and a weak chief, is that a strong chief has the ability to fire and hire his or her department. So, they'll bring people in, they'll let people go as they see fit. A weak chief will need to go to the board, whoever the board is at that time, to run the personnel selections by them. So, those are really the two main differences. I don't know, Mr. Littwell, Mr. Concanon, if there's any others that you want to add? Are those the two main ones?
You pretty much have that correct.
Awesome, thank you.
How do the, how the fire people feel?
We don't know. We don't know. These are just texts and phone calls that I've received from people that were remain nameless, because they asked to remain nameless, and I will honor their request, but I said I'd bring it up.
Where's that terminology, strong and weak, coming from?
Oh, was it like 43.2B or something like that?
I would think that we could come up with some better terminology. I mean, weak implies that that's the less desirable of the two, but it's really a different way of governing.
Correct.
Yes, that's what it is. Lisa, could you put in a good word for, with Naughton on this one?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that one's not going anywhere. The other thing I would like to just say was, when we asked in the last board meeting, there were several members of the fire department there, and they were very clear that they preferred strong chief.
Correct.
Were they voters? Lisa?
Hmm?
Were they voters?
Um, I can't remember who was in the back of the room.
No, Eloise, they weren't.
One was.
Hang on, hang on.
One was.
Gentlemen in the corner?
How difficult is it to find a candidate to fill this position, and then how, how much would the person potentially filling that position favor one or the other, and does that make it easier or harder for us to hire a good candidate based on how you decide to do that?
It could. I mean, we have a number of applicants in for the interim chief, which I am just absolutely tickled pink over, and we have quite a few folks who have put their application in to be part of that screening committee, so that warms my heart as well. And that's probably one of the questions that will need to be asked to the applicant. Do you want to come in as a strong chief? What are your feelings if the town moves you to weak chief? And all of them may say, see, I got to go. So, that could influence your decision there. I don't know. But again, this is just something that I wanted to bring up. Mr. Bigford?
Yeah, peg of the 351 cities and towns, you know how many towns actually have a strong chief?
It's more. It's more than half are strong. And there was, I think, Rehoboth, Dayton, a couple years ago tried to flip it back to weak chief, but the majority of them are now strong chief.
I just have a historical comment. I believe that when we, we were talking about this in the first place, to go from weak chief to strong chief, it was that ability of the chief to hire and fire at will that was the really deciding factor that made us go, yeah, that's a really good idea. So, my sense is that the definition of the true has become fuzzy in, in the common conversation. That's maybe what needs to be stressed, is what actually do the two things mean.
Correct. And that's why we wanted to share with you the definition that we have of strong chief and weak chief, because some people may not know. And so, obviously, in order for you guys to make any type of informed decision, you need the information. We're just not going to make it blindly for you. The selectmen aren't going to sit there on a Monday night and go, woo-hoo, let's change it to this. No, it's, we want to hear from you folks. And if you, you know, we'll give you this, if you don't feel comfortable talking on camera and would like to approach any of us, our emails are out there. Feel free to swing by, talk to any of us, get in touch with wherever Mary went. Get in touch with Mary, you know, hey, can I get an email from one of the selectmen? We're more than open to that, so please know our door is open.
So, that would be something that would go on the warrant?
Absolutely.
And what was, so what would, how much would drive you to do that? Like, if 50 people responded and said we want to change it, if 10 people, 500?
Well, I mean, as Eloise made the comment, if 50 people want to do it, and they're in, 50 of them are 16-year-olds, probably not. You know, but if it's, there's 2,100-ish registered voters in town? Yeah, closer to 22, 23. Yeah. So, obviously, you're going to want a good portion of that population to come forth and say...
Yeah, I, if I recall from that town meeting, it was pretty strongly in favor of the strong chief, so I'm just curious.
Yeah. No, and again, this was something that was brought up, so it was like, hey, I'll bring it up.
It's, if something is voted on in the town meeting, is there any precedent that that decision carries forward for some period of time? I mean, if, if we, you know, voted, the last town meeting said this is the way we want to do it, is it, can it be brought up again at the next town meeting, or is there some rule that says, no, we already voted on that once, we're not going to vote on it every time? Or could this potentially end up being something that gets voted on every time?
I don't think there's a time limit on it.
I believe you have to implement it for like three years, and then you can rescind it.
Just this particular item?
Or any item.
Or any item?
Just in general, if you voted on something at town meeting, how quickly can someone cause you to have to vote on it to get it to the next town?
They could, for a general thing, they can bring it up at the next town meeting.
You can do it every town meeting.
The only thing they can't is zoning. If it fails, it has to wait two years.
I have a question about that, though, but you couldn't change the strong chief, weak chief while you have a sitting chief that's strong or weak, right?
Yeah, we're having one that's retired, so we would have to make the decision sooner rather than later.
Right, so if you have, you know, we couldn't do that right now because of the current situation.
Of course you could. I think you can. You could call a special town meeting.
Okay.
Because it wouldn't be effective till after his retirement.
But I'm saying, like, it couldn't be effective for somebody who is strong. Like, you couldn't change it. If we hired some as strong chief, if we hired a strong chief?
In the middle of the term, I would have to defer to council.
Yeah, I don't think we can change it. I'm...
Mr. Bigford?
Yeah, well, just as food for thought, you know, our highway superintendent is answerable to elected people. A police chief is answerable to elected people. The fire chief ought to be elected, answerable to elected people. At that town meeting, I got up and I had a petition signed, a citizen's petition that was signed by former chiefs of police, fire chiefs, selectmen, Henry Wheeler signed it, Roger Wheeler signed it, Billy Wheeler signed it, other fire officials signed it to not have a strong chief. I introduced it, and another selectman got up before I had a chance to explain it and moved the pass over it, and that was, you know, this is town meeting, just a unanimous vote, no idea what the reason was or anything else about it, no idea. It was, it was more deadly than moving the question and shutting off one of your neighbors on the ability to speak. Everybody that knew the fire department, that was familiar with it, that weren't in the empire building things, wanted to have, and I agree with the woman there about this weak-strong thing, wanted, did not want a strong chief. The chief should be answerable to the people that we elect directly, and that's just something to think about.
I'm confused. I thought a strong chief still was answerable to the selectmen. They just need cause, which is good, because I didn't have any of our departments politically changed out of the whim of, of elections, and so I'm fine with it, either chief, as long as they're responsible to the selectmen.
All right. Any other comments? I hear that coffee has stopped percolating, so I'm thinking it's ready to go if you want to wander up, grab some coffee, grab some cider, grab some cookies, I've already had two.
But who's counting?
But who's counting? The camera, obviously, and my pants. So, if, we'll open up the floor to you guys. What brought you here tonight? What do you want to hear? What do you want us to work on? What's gnawing at your craw that you want to get off your chest?
Thanks. I live on Crosby Road.
Neighbor.
Neighbor. And the railroad tracks were right behind my house, and three or four years ago, they dumped a bunch of railroad ties and a few pieces of track, because the track is basically unattached to the rail bed, and when the train goes by, it just floats up and down and goes side to side. There's huge holes, and they obviously recognize that there's something wrong with it. And then about four or five months ago, they were doing some work somewhere, and they dumped a pile of garbage at the corner of Crosby in the intersection, just railroad There's huge holes and they obviously recognize that there's something wrong with it. And then about four or five months ago, they were doing some work somewhere and they dumped a pile of garbage at the corner of Crosby and the intersection, just railroad debris. And my question is, is there someone in the town who is the representative with CSX? Because calling directly, you're talking to somebody, the first question is, what state are you in? So obviously, they, you know, there's no interest, unless the signal is broken, they don't wanna talk to you. So I guess I'm wondering who I can contact and say, I think you have an unsafe condition. It's all hazardous waste that goes by. It's all tank trucks going to the plastics factories. And the train is just, it's just unattached.
Awesome. Do you know of anybody?
Um, I might check with maybe all the Kelp.
We get communications with CSX about their vegetation removal plans, but I think that's a governmental contact.
That's another subject. I mean, when they spray Agent Orange going by, it's unbelievable. But anyway, this is, this is strictly a concern for safety as the train goes to the town. Oh, sure, I'll, I'd be happy to. Thank you. That's great.
I don't, that's all I got.
Okay. I was just thinking, because sometimes they have to deal with the closeness of the septic to the property. I remember one case where they had a...
Right, but this, this sounds like more of a transportation issue where CSX and Norton would be your best bet.
We could do that too.
Cause he would probably have more clout getting the executives to listen.
Then Paul, come on.
I was more thinking he might have somebody over there where he has a number, where we could start and sort of diagnose.
As possible.
He might.
All right. So definitely look into that?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we need to get in touch with Paul and or Representative Norton since, well, we're gonna bug him about the center of town and see what he can do. So we'll get after it. What else?
This is really dynamic. There, there's a lot of speeding on my road. I live on Pleasant Street. And I keep, I keep calling in, it like, there's, now and then there's an incident. I was, I was pulling out of Crosby Road today and I live about a thousand feet from the intersections. And as I, as I, as I pulled up to the intersection and stopped, there was a car rounding the bend by the post office. And, and there was, there was enough room for me to get out. So I started to nose out and a blue nineteen-seventy-eight Pontiac.
But really, but Brandon's in the car, it's all right.
And I'm pretty sure it's a Pontiac, blue with a white roof, you know, solid, hard, hard roof, came flying around by him and squeezed between me and the car. I, I was like, where the hell did he come from?
They passed me in front of my house the other day.
Same car? Then you guys need to stick it out.
It was, it was way over the speed limit. You know, it's twenty-five there and it's a, I don't know, do we have a W on it? I don't, no, we don't have a line there. But anyway, it's just ridiculous. It was like, you're passing on a curve in a village with a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit.
Okay. We'll get in touch with Chief Galvin. All right. Got that one. What else?
I just wanna add to that. I mean, we live on South Street, we have the same problem speeding. But I've seen in other towns, they have things up that say how fast you're going in the blink if you're going too fast. And it's not like the, we expect the police to be out on every street cause every, you know, there's a lot of speeding in town. But I think there's other methods that could be used to discourage. You know, I don't, I just, if you're gonna talk to Chief Galvin, I don't know, something. You know, even like the flashing thing down by the road rage.
Pegel, on the traffic topic, somebody who couldn't come tonight had brought up that idea to me to say, hey, tonight, he feels on one-seventeen, they have the flash, your, your speed is such and such on both sides of the center of Bolton. And he's pulling out a water aquatic and whatnot. And that can be as bad as, you know, pulling out at the center of town here. He says he's really feels that just that simple, your speed is, has slowed people down on one-seventeen. So he said, maybe we could do that on both sides of town, so.
Janet?
You know, people come down by, by my house, I live on that dead end of Pleasant Street. It's not really a dead end, but you know. It's twenty-five miles an hour at the top of the hill. I will guarantee you that the four hundred feet to my house, the majority of them are going over fifty miles an hour. Easily.
Okay.
Yeah. And if they're coming the other way from Northborough up, they're cutting it the whole way, cause it's fairly straight.
Okay. All right.
And I'm old and I might break a little more easily.
No one breaks. We're, we're Berlinites, we don't break. All right. What else? What else is on your mind?
Quiet, Mary.
Oh, yes. We have some written questions that were submitted ahead of time. You gotta love this, honest to God, this town. What's the update with the library with regards to well, septic and possible addition renovation? I will be very careful to say it is a tight tank, because apparently one of the selectmen meeting, I called it a tiny tank. Sorry.
Yes, you did.
I did, I did. I know that Dave Smith has been working with the library on that possibility. I know that they wanted to try to stay away from the tight tank because it's really not that cost-effective. But they haven't come up with a solution just yet. We have time, but again, our concern is everyone goes, oh, we have two years. Two years has gone in the blink of an eye. So there really is not a lot to share, but I know that our building inspector and Dave, our highway guy, were taking the lead on this, so let me reach out to them. And the renovation, I'll have to get from the library folks. Yeah, Mr. Bob. All right. Do you wanna read the next one?
I think you've covered all those.
Well, you were talking about the streetlights, so do you mean the new ones?
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
Can I just?
The question was, when will we start to see new streetlights?
New streetlights?
Where?
All throughout town.
All throughout town.
Oh, you mean the LED?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We're, we're thinking red light, green light.
We moved on. We got big lights.
So the equipment has been ordered and it is in-house and the contract has been sent to National Grid, who's... We're not gonna talk about National Grid. But I expect to see work probably within the next month or so and it's gonna go really fast once it starts. So they expect to have them up in about a week of when they start.
What is it that they're exactly gonna be doing?
Uh, we are replacing the streetlights in town with LEDs so that they are more energy efficient and we are going to get a little bit more brightness in certain places because our streetlights here, well, a lot of them will stay, you know, dim because it's very rural. Some of these areas need to be lit a little better too.
Are there gonna be any streetlights added at all or just the existing?
No streetlights added at this point, just the existing stock. I think that once we, we are buying the streetlights from National Grid, which will allow us to potentially expand that, you know, down the road if we need to.
So I just wanted to add something to the previous conversation with the library. Just to say the word Presby septic system, which is, which is really excellent for places where there's ledge and there's no ability to put in a septic. It was used at the Mount Washington Hotel, which is right on the water. So I, I don't know if...
I, I'll speak a little bit because I was a trustee for three years when this was going down and I haven't been for the last year.
Okay.
But the concern isn't just the septic. The concern is it's a public water supply and the state has certain regulations as to how far water in septic can be. And we have septic systems with houses and nineteen Carter and wells that are not in, in, so the state is very much involved and have pretty much told them what needs to happen and they have a whole list of criteria. But it's more, it's more not the room and the septic as it is the public water supply in the well. That's, was my understanding.
So what about going across the street and, and up onto the hill?
I, I...
That they land.
Yeah, it has.
They're looking into a, a lot, several different options.
They are looking, but it's, it's, it's not just, it's not just the septic. It's also the fact that it's a public water supply.
Right.
And there's no space there for anything.
No, I know, but I, I, I'm going back to... Twenty-two hundred feet, Lisa?
I don't, I don't remember the numbers, but...
It's a lot.
Yeah, we have, we have no space for anything.
I was, I'm going back to a conversation that's probably fifteen or twenty years old, but at, at, at that point, there, there was something across the street on, on the other side of Carter Street. Up on the ledge, I don't know, just saying, just throwing it out there.
What does nineteen Carter do for water? I would assume that their system's probably been recently upgraded to some extent just cause all the renovations that have happened there. Would it be possible to potentially work out some deal where the town effectively buys its water from nineteen Carter?
It's not a public water supply.
Public water.
It's private, so it doesn't have to be public water.
I think this is another area where we're really gonna maybe need to start thinking outside of the box and, you know, we may want to consider. I know that at one point, a library in another location almost passed, like, missed by this much. And I, I think that maybe people need to start thinking out of the box a little bit on this one because of the space restrictions over there.
Yeah.
What else you got? Coffee is ready, by the way, it's awesome.
Along the lines of, of, of traffic. I, I read in The Globe this past week that Temescal Wellness is working, I guess with the town of Hudson and Berlin to come up with a traffic management plan. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to that, where we sit right now, the status of it is?
Being the traffic?
It says here that the town, the Hudson Town Administrator posted that the towns of Hudson and Berlin are working with Temescal to approve a traffic management plan and to coordinate an opening date.
I'm, I'm guessing that it's Chief Galvin has been working with Hudson.
He has been, I mean, since our meeting in November, which he was actually late to. He was coming from the Hudson Police where they were trying to figure out. And that's why the license has been delayed for them to open, because there isn't, there isn't a plan to handle the traffic and the parking. So I think just because of where it's located, they need to figure that out cause obviously, you don't want people parking in the hotel and running across four lanes of traffic. You don't want them parking down Gates Pond. You don't want them parking up on the hill and then skipping down over the hill, so...
So there might potentially be a shuttle?
Don't know. It might be, because I know that other towns have looked at that. I think Lester has a shuttle. I don't know if Northampton ended up having a shuttle for that, but...
Considering proximity to four ninety-five?
Correct.
Might be something we consider having them come in to talk about.
I think this is a question for Chief Galvin.
So we're, so we're not sure where it's answered. I know I've read a couple of different things.
And that is, I mean, it is in, it's in Hudson, so I mean, the, at the end of the day.
Yeah, I was surprised to see that they were working with Berlin and that's why I'm bringing it up since that was at that, so. Cause my, you, you mentioned Lester and I guess my concern again with its proximity to Berlin is, is what happened in Lester a few weeks ago with the middle school students.
And I think that those are the lessons that they're looking at. So they're doing their very much due diligence and looking probably around the cities and towns that have implemented it and said, ooh, what's worked, what hasn't worked? And going from there. But Lisa, Chris and I really don't have a lot of information, but we can follow up with Chief. Maybe he can put something out on the town website for an update, so the folks can see what's going on.
That would be good. Do you, do you have any concerns, I mean, with? I don't know if you've seen the article on what happened in Lester a few weeks after the dispensary opened there. That there was two middle school students rushed to the hospital by ambulance from the middle school after ingesting gummy bears. So the concern and the comments by their police chief and their superintendent was that they expect to see many more incidents like this because of the proximity of the dispensary. So, I mean, I'm wondering if we as a town, as town leadership, are considering what the effect once Temescal does open. I know it's not in Berlin, but it will affect the town, the community and the schools. So just wondering if there's been any plans or thoughts given to what could happen.
Yeah, I mean, at least to say that at our level, no. I mean, Chief Galvin's the one who's been driving it, but we'll get in touch with him and see what he can share with us and with the town. So we'll get back to you on that and share your concerns.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Our pleasure. What else?
Do we have any ideas when the warrant might open for the special town meeting? Or I'm sorry, the regular town meeting?
It has opened.
Oh, okay. I was aware of that.
It's, it's February eleven.
It closes February eleventh. At noon. Just saying.
Dropped it.
Don't be late.
So I'm sorry, when did it? It opened this time? Okay, I didn't, I wasn't aware. I had sent an email asking, but it wasn't open at the time.
Right.
But I'd see a follow-up. All right.
Well, I tried to get...
And it closes, I just wanna make this sort of February eleventh.
Noon.
At noon.
Not noon oh one. Not noon. Right with Scott. And a petition needs ten registered voters.
Yeah, it's a lot easier than a special town meeting, that's for sure.
Okay. All right, hang on. You got a question?
What's the location of this Temescal? Temescal. Is it, is it the existing?
The blue building, so as you're coming...
The existing on the south side of sixty-two?
Right, so as you're on your way to Market Basket, you know, past four ninety-five, four ninety-five, Gates Pond, feel badly for the people trying to come out.
Yeah.
It's that blue building right there, kind of almost across the street from the Dunkin' Donuts and the gas station.
And what is, what is being built along the edge of the road on the, the north side? I thought that was going to be the recreational.
I had heard another one, but I don't know. I mean, it looked like it was going gangbusters and then stopped.
Okay. And I had heard that originally the other was going to go...
The other building? So when you come down on the Market Basket, like right there, one of theirs...
Across the street.
Yeah, across the street.
I thought that was gonna be passed.
Well, that's what we're saying, but we don't know the, the state of it, who would, you know...
They're probably stuck for smoke.
There you go.
So why don't we ask Chief Galvin?
About that one too?
About that one too.
So they were, both were going to be recreational and medicinal were gonna be on the same site? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I mean, the blue one, the building that's up now was originally medicinal. And then I'm gonna assume that they probably applied for the license for recreational and then as they were doling them out, that one got it.
I didn't realize that was Coolidge. I thought Coolidge was on the opposite siding street.
Ms. Brenna?
I just wanted to comment on the town procedure for getting a burn permit because I, I had a lot of brush on my property, having taken down over twenty, almost thirty trees that were, you know, anywhere from this big to whatever. And, and I called into the dispatch and they sent me to the website. And when I got to the appropriate website to apply for my permit for the year on January fifteenth, all it was, was an emblem and, and a white screen. So I called back in and I said, why, how come I can't log in? And she said, well, it's not nine o'clock yet. So the time, you can have a burn permit at nine o'clock and you can start to burn at ten and you have to have your fire out at four. So they, simply, they don't give you burn permits until after nine AM, which I thought was, so until you try to get a burn permit, just be patient, wait till the...
Have coffee.
Yeah, have your coffee, wait till the clock turns nine and then you can go on the website and register for your year-long burning permit. I was really impressed. And then there's a little line where it says, call this number. And I called the number and the, and the automated voice at the other end said, hello Brenna.
There you go.
Just from my phone number being registered in the permit. That was seconds later.
Look at that.
It was very impressive.
Another item, Lisa, you had sent a message around to Chris and I right before this meeting. Did you wanna talk about the winter closings with the big storm pending?
It's more, it's more internal, but last year, we came up with a winter closure policy where the fire chief and the highway department and the chair of the select board have a call about whether the town offices are gonna close or not. And then we, you know, post it on the Facebook page and wherever it needs to go. And a call goes out to town employees. So it was really sort of an internal thing, but also there is a method to let folks know if the town offices are gonna be closed. But I think, you know, if the roads are bad, sort of assume that the town offices are gonna be closed.
Yes, and a shout-out ahead of time to the highway department. I have a feeling they'll be very busy. Yes, and a shout out ahead of time to the highway department. I have a feeling they'll be very busy Saturday night and into Sunday.
Since you said Facebook, I, I'd like to say something. Facebook is great if you have a Facebook page. Recently, at my work, we had some incidences, and many of us as professionals have decided to remove ourselves from Facebook for some pretty significant reasons. And if you're referring to Facebook and announcements and you don't have a Facebook page, those announcements have to be somewhere found on the, on the Berlin website page as well.
Can I, can I?
No, I'm just saying.
Up until this point, we have had a volunteer webmaster who really could not get that up in a timely manner. Could not happen. He's out of town, he's not available. This is not his job, he's a volunteer. So we are in the process, I think mid-February, we will be rolling out a new website that will have the ability to post those types of items. We just have not had that.
You mean a Berlin town Facebook page?
No, I'm saying the town website.
Oh, cool.
Will be changing and will be updated to a website that will give us the ability to put banners on that website saying the town offices are closed. But our current website, due to technology, due to...
Well, I'm just talking about the town offices being closed. I'm talking about other announcements that just get put on Facebook because people assume...
Because right now there's a, the Facebook feed actually goes on to the town website. So anything that goes on Facebook also is on the town website. But yes, we can use the town website more thoroughly once we have the technology to do so.
Nice. Because I noticed that Berlin's, Berlin's Safety has their own website?
They will no longer have their own website. It will be going under our new website.
Awesome.
So that everything starts to be integrated in the same place.
Good, 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 good. I'm glad you brought this up.
There you go.
Yeah, I forgot to say that.
This has been a tight project since I came in, so.
Awesome.
This has been in progress for a while.
What else you got? People in the back. Mr. Bigford.
I'm gonna call you, Mr. Bigford, because...
No, I'm not gonna call you.
I know, but you can't call me, can't call me that, I can't, just saying.
The name's Walter. Well, one thing that goes on, people take it for granted, you have no idea the amount of effort and everything that goes in. The Conservation Commission, Berlin is Berlin because of our open spaces and our agriculture and our woodlands. And people come here and wonder, how did you do it? And people yesterday tell me, driving through towns, what a wonderful town. We're losing it in a hurry, believe me. But we have, the Conservation Commission has acquired over one thousand four hundred acres of land protected, and it's cost the taxpayers in Berlin ten thousand dollars. All right? The first piece we bought, a hundred and forty acres of Mount Piska from Tyler, we got reimbursement. That was a hundred, a hundred forty thousand. That was sixty-two thousand. We got all but ten thousand back, so we put ten thousand there. After that, between gifts and Solomon Pond Malls, three million dollars in mitigation money, and then another six hundred thousand from Highland Commons, we partnered and worked, well, we worked ourselves out with the state, and we probably have got close to fifty percent reimbursement on all of that. So basically, instead of having three thousand, three million, six hundred thousand, we've had around five million dollars that we spent on open space. Well, we're running out of money. We've got about a quarter of a million right now left. And we're looking at thirty acres on Peachill Road, which we have a P and S on, we wanna get that. And, but, if you look around, there are couples farms still going, big pieces of land, and it is a race with the local poor developer. We can't, so we will be looking for funds, and I don't know if it'll be at this town meeting, I don't think so. But, you know, the Community Preservation Act hardly scratches the surface. We're gonna need some money. The commission's gonna ask the selectmen if we can put in articles to put the money from Rollback, from Rollback on sixty-one taxes that are sold into the Open Space Fund, a couple of other, the sale of tax titled lands into the Open Space Fund. So we have money on hand when an opportunity comes along, and that's the way we work. This is all behind the scenes. You have no idea what it takes to get, get a piece of land tied up, and we really have some good criteria. Century Valley Trustees, things that Berlin, the job we're doing is the best of all the towns that they work with. They, they just can't believe the success that we do. In fact, I'm giving a talk next Saturday with a group of people on how we've done it, what we're doing. But anyway, just to sow that seed that we're gonna need, if you wanna keep Berlin Berlin, we're gonna need more money. So.
Can I ask you a question? How can we learn more about that? You said you're working behind the scenes, but like, how could, how, like, how can we learn more about it? So that we understand that by the time we get to...
Well, you know, that's, you're absolutely right. Just lately, as a matter of fact, we're starting to work, I'm working on central map regional planning and also Century Valley Trustees put together maps showing what we've done, the sequence of what we've done, how we've done it, the amount of monies that we, you know, spent and all this other stuff. But as far as negotiating, you know, if we're negotiating for a piece of land, Mr. Smith, that's one of the things that are exempt from the open meeting law. You know, you kinda do it quietly, you make sure you line it up so somebody else doesn't jump in and get us. But you're right, I mean, we, I'm using next Saturday's talk as a build something up, and I'll be glad to do it in Berlin a couple times.
I think that, I think that's important, just educating the people and myself and Coolidge about what you're doing. I think it's important. I think it's important, and I think a lot of people in this town think it's important, so.
Well, that, that segues into one other thing, selectman. As, and this is just me, and maybe everybody disagrees, but I look at, you know, look at other...
Wow.
Look at other...
We'll be separating them from that shortly, or having a...
Look at other town...
How about we do a pay-per-view? Seventy-five dollars, a pay-per-view, you two duke it out. Just saying, here's some money for you.
I'm suing for going after the elderly.
Real elderly. So, where was I? What was I talking about? Oh, oh, the website, the website, and I'm sorry about this, and we've got a website, and it's good, you can use it. But frankly, it isn't sexy and colorful and something that you can get on, so, you know...
We're launching a new website that has much more of a splash than we're, so.
What, what's that?
There's a new website, it's a new town website that's coming, and each department will have the ability to update and maintain their own information. So you can make it as sexy as you want.
Okay.
Splashy.
Splashy.
Splashy, splashy, not splashy.
Splashy, not, is that like Titanic?
You'll be able to upgrade your own furniture.
There was one item that I brought up that I saw recently on the Berlin Facebook page was about the amount of trash that seems to be living on our streets throughout the town. And everybody is, is irate, as you would be. I know I am when I go down my road and there's trash in my flower garden, so I mumble and pick it up and bring it to the dump, transfer station. And we're more than willing to try and do something, and whether organize Earth Day version two, three, four. Earlier this year, Mary had reached out on our behalf to the Sheriff Department to help bring in some folks to help clean up some of the town. But as Lisa has pointed out many times in previous meetings, we can't get things done without you. So it's one thing to say, the trash is horrible, we need to find the fireball guy, you know, who's whizzing out the nips going down the road, but we need to, we need, I know, we don't know where he is.
I walk my dog on Crosby Road and I pick two or three up every day, and I, I, this has been going on for twenty years. And I'm like, he, he must be dead by now.
He's passed on to his children. But I'm saying, we need your help. So if this is something that truly gets under your fingernails and you wanna do something about it, we'll help to organize it. I know probably this coming weekend, we're all gonna be under the cover of snow for a few months. But, you know, in the spring, in the summer, in the fall, before the next snow comes this time next year, what can we do? So it's great to get on Facebook and complain about the trash and the bad chairs that somebody left on the side of the road or the collection of tires that are sitting somewhere, but we need your help. So you've gotta remember that, that you need to come to us with suggestions and ideas and a posse of people.
And volunteer.
Yeah.
So some municipalities select...
Person, peg, peg works. There you go.
Have you adopted the neighborhood approach, the cleaning up? Is that, you've already been there, right?
Yep.
Way happy.
No, I think it's an awesome idea, but you need warm bodies to make that work.
Right.
Our Conservation Commission is very busy, and the fact that they do one a month, or one a year, is amazing because they have a lot of other work that they have to do, so, so volunteers.
This is, this is, I'm gonna describe quickly a model that's been used by a church community that I've been members of. So that they divided all the, all the membership by zip code in Worcester. So, so that if someone was sick, or if they, if they didn't have a ride, or if they broke their leg, or whatever, they could reach out to this, this pie-shaped group of people that were, that were local to their, you know, they didn't know, come to church, they don't realize that they're neighbors, but they're two streets over from this guy that broke his leg and he can't get to church by himself. So the idea was to have us all sit down together as a group that knew each other and be able to, you know, interface and help each other out. Well, maybe if we thought of dividing Berlin into, into like cleanup quadrants and then, and then say, you know, it's, it's, you know, South and Pleasant, below the post office are cleaning up on such and such a day. You know what I'm saying?
But you still need somebody to drive that process.
I understand.
So these are the things, these are great ideas, but you need somebody to drive the process.
Absolutely.
You need somebody to come in and say, we'd like to start this organization or this committee and drive that process. Because frankly, the volunteers that are already volunteering are swamped here.
I've heard that.
Are there places that are, that are being dumped at repeatedly that's like a known spot? And I'm almost like, there's a lot, there's a lot of people in town that hunt. Maybe when it's not hunting season, they can set up their trail cameras all around that spot.
It's actually been...
The one that's throwing out the damn nips gets a hundred dollars or something.
That's exactly what we were saying about, one of the, one of the, was it the one that, I don't know, whatever. That was exactly one of the responses on Facebook last week.
Yeah, because it's down at the end of Derby, right past the liquor store or that corner.
Right.
We had cleaned it up and like five minutes later, there was another nip there.
Highland is also on the way to Bolton. I walk with a friend regularly, and I couldn't believe it. There were these fifty nips, and apparently that's all the time.
Yeah.
Could we have those yellow trash bags available to people?
Throughout the year?
Yeah.
I had actually talked to Carolyn last time about that, and she was gonna try to make sure they were available at the transfer station and maybe the fire, but I'm not sure if she had followed up on that. I can follow up again.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
No, Carolyn.
Oh, Carolyn.
Because Conservation had a lot of those bags, but...
Can the Berlin website have a tab for a volunteer's template? For like, you know what I mean, like if you, if you wanna volunteer to help, you know, if you wanna do something for the town, you can create a volunteer group with a tab, and it opens to a, to a form that you can fill out and then submit to the town. We wanna, we wanna have a trash pickup day or such and such, you know what I mean?
I think at this point, you could send a message to the town. You couldn't actively, you, you'd have to bring the idea forth. Then we could put something up, just, but from outside, you couldn't do it that way, if that makes sense. There, there's, the functionality that I think you're asking for is not available at this point.
No, I'm making the suggestion.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We went with a vendor that does most of the municipal websites in Massachusetts, as far as we can tell, because there, there used to be two, and then one got bought out, so they're doing most of the websites. So the functionality is pretty standard across the board. It's not like there's a lot of custom stuff in there. But there, I mean, there are, you'll be able to volunteer easily from there. So what you could do is you could come in and say, we want to form such and such a committee, or we want to announce X, and we could do that.
So basically, a different version of what I was saying.
There's probably ways to do what you're...
Cool. There, there could be a link, couldn't there, on our website that would take you to another one to have people join?
Yeah, but then somebody has to spawn another website, and really, we don't want, we don't want a lot of links to outside websites on our website for security reasons, particularly those that are not state agencies or already a secure site.
While we're talking about property cleanup, I've got one that's been bugging me for years and like to see if the town is, if it's on the radar screen or if we can get it on the radar screen, and that's the Tolman Greenhouse property.
It's sort of on the radar, my radar, anyway.
So my, my understanding is that taxes and arrears on that are around a hundred thousand dollars. I do know that there was contamination spills there with diesel fuel in the past. The DDP has been involved in testing the land. I think that's maybe been a little bit deregulated, or the level of an issue there has been minimized. Clear with the, clearly with the tax, I mean, Town Treasurer being a neighbor, Dennis and I have spoken about that. And I do have, you know, some of the round numbers that he's thrown out there that possibly costs about a hundred thousand dollars to clean the property up as well. The town, taking it through tax foreclosure, I understand they were, we were always concerned that we're gonna be inheriting a brown field or whatever. Dennis has outlined the scenario that we could take it by tax foreclosure, test it. And if it tests as clean, we could clean it up or sell it as is, or if it is contaminated, then we hand it back to the property owner. I haven't seen anything on the mass land records that the mortgage company is taking the property, so I don't know if the ag loan on that, they're trying to stay at arm's length, like the town has been trying to stay at arm's length. But I'd like to see it get back on the tax rolls. You talk about, you know, cleaning up, we've been trying to clean up the potty field that they had across the street. They've taken a couple of carloads pots to the transfer station, but there's not much I can do with glass and greenhouse and oil burners and oil tanks and whatnot, so I, I don't know if this has been discussed from the selecting level.
Chris, you said it's on your radar screen.
It is. I actually had gotten some information from the town administrator in Bolton about, I believe it was grants or something that might be able to use in order, they had a property up there that they used grants in order to help offset the cost to clean up a property. So I was gonna look into that. I just recently talked to him about it.
What about as far as the legal aspect, and if it is contaminated, we've taken it by tax foreclosure? Do we, are we clear that we could actually hand it back and not be liable for that portion, or?
I think that's something we'll, we'll have to look into.
It's just a mess, and it's been a mess for a long time. There's a lot of pollution that's sitting there and...
Chris, on the, this town warrant, you, there will be an article, Rob, to turn over, take the other side of the road tax title and turn it over to Conservation Commission because we've even, we're negotiating with some people that own up on the other side of the railroad tracks and then with Balance Rock Farm, and that could be all a greenway. And that piece would help link that greenway with the Chedco Farms land that's all conserved. So that little piece would be cleaned up.
I've already cleaned up most of that side. It's the other side of the road.
Well, I'm getting to that. So Dennis thought that if we picked that up, I just talked to him a couple days ago about it, that if we did find it was contaminated, we could shut off the, the taking of it and putting it back. But I don't, I can't believe it's that contaminated. Oil cleans itself up after a while and fertilizes, and I think it's a man... There's not metal there, I would think. Somebody'd wanna salvage a lot of that stuff. Anyway, whatever.
Just put it on the radar screen.
It is. See, look right here, there's a box, and it says, Chris, underline, underline. Just like, Lisa, you have one too, underline, underline for the yellow trash bags. Note, I'm taking the notes, there are no peg boxes.
I've got one on my page.
Yeah, no.
I was wondering what happens to the stray animals that are picked up by the animal control person, that they might not have a home for?
I don't know. I mean, I know I've called her a couple times. We had a black cat wander into our yard that we took in and fed, and through Facebook, I found someone to come ta- Through Facebook, I found someone to come take her and put her in a shelter. There was a dog wandering down Lyman. Lyman is not the street that I grew up on as a little kid, where you could start at the top of the hill and go whizzing down on a toboggan. Um, basically run to the mailbox and then run back into the yard, uh, you know, and the dog was roaming down the street. So same thing, went out. Grab the dog, brought her in the house and called the dog officer. So, but I don't know what they do with them. We can call. Yeah.
I believe there's a network, I believe there's a network of towns, people that all work together to, you know, temporarily board strays that show up.
It's still Helen, isn't it?
Helen, yeah.
Okay.
All right. I think we also, you might be seeing in the, an article on the warrant or, or actually a part of, of the budget. Um, where Chief Galvin, our police chief, is looking into, um, is it combining, it's combining?
Well, there's somebody already who handles, um, the sort of pet control aspects of several neighboring communities.
Yeah.
Um, and it will allow us to have a little bit more twenty-four seven for an animal control than we do now.
Yeah.
It, the feeling was it's time to sort of enhance our solution in that area.
You know, it's very difficult for the person that's doing it right now. She's got a full-time job, I believe, and, and so this might be helpful. But we will look into it.
As long as it's not the Berlin bear. Still haven't seen the Berlin bear. Can't capture. Yeah, can't capture the Berlin bear. What else? Oh, come on, we got a lot of people here and there's nothing. Really?
Karen's not whispering on the rest of us.
Oh, I didn't see that.
All right. Anything? Anybody from the back? Not even from the front, the sides?
I want one of your cookies.
Come on over, they're awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll be back in touch. Thanks, Mr. Brad.